Good evening. My name is Robin Jankowicz and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a special board meeting tonight that all can participate remotely via Zoom or in person here in the boardroom. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at NVUSD.org/Board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Isidra Menkos and Francisco Mesa. May we have one of the interpreters translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families can hear the instructions?
Buenas noches. La reunión de hoy va a tener servicios de interpretación en español. Para acceder a los servicios de interpretación, en breves momentos ustedes van a ver en la parte de abajo de su pantalla de Zoom un icono del globo terráqueo. Van a poder hacer clic allí y escoger el idioma Spanish o español. Si ustedes están en su teléfono móvil, van a ver tres puntitos y more o más. Allí pueden también hacer clic para encontrar los servicios de interpretación. Gracias.
Thank you very much. May we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant.
Yes, student board member Bitt is absent tonight. Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Ryson?
Present.
Trustee González Maris is absent tonight. Trustee Shu?
Present.
Trustee Dooley?
Here.
Quorum present. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vera. Tonight's meeting is a special meeting of the board and there will be no public comment on non-agenda items. You may make public comment on agendized items only. We are going to call to order in open session at 5:34. And Trustee Gracia, will you please lead us in the flag salute?
Certainly. Everyone, please rise. Join me and say.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced and located on the district webpage at NVUSD.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district webpage. Approval of special session agenda. May I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Water. All in favor?
Aye.
Special session agenda passes. This is, as we have said, a special meeting, so we have a singular item under action item, general services. It's a request from See My Smile Campaign to approve their submitted resolution. The staff does not have a recommendation for this item. This is an item requested by a member of the community. Trustee Water, did we receive any public comment via public comment at NVUSD.org?
We received no public comments.
Thank you very much, Trustee Water. We will start this evening with public comment. Please remember to state your full name. We will start with members of the audience here in the boardroom and then move to virtual public comment. As a reminder, each individual will receive three minutes at the podium as is customary at each board meeting. Is Mary Ann Wiley, please come to the podium?
How close do I have to be? This good. Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Wiley. This is the very first school board meeting I have been at, so I'd like to thank you all for what you do. I just want to encourage, I think the See My Smile Campaign is a good one. I think children need to have a respite from the masks. I think they need to get into a better emotional situation. And I think that does by seeing each other's face, the teachers' faces, other people's. Since it's no longer mandatory, I would just encourage you to think about it and go with it. So thank you very much and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. As there is no one else in the boardroom, we will now move to virtual public comment. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment? And I will remind everybody to please state your full name.
Yes, we do. The first speaker is C.O. Go ahead and please state your name.
Hi, this is Kristy Bo. Thank you for taking our comments. I have a few. The resolution makes several generalizations that confuse historical data with more recent data. I have a few. There are so many wherashes. I started with page one and numbered them 1, 2, 3, 4. So number four, whereas on the first page, says, "Community members can generally make their own decisions about their personal health decisions and treatments." Using the term generally basically makes the rest of this null and void because it's the not generally that general public is usually concerned with. The whereas number five says that one reason for a mask mandate, well, currently we do not have a mask mandate, but not reinstating a mask mandate in the future, is the ventilation as, and they quote, "As receiving as much outside air as possible so that increased transmission in school is not a serious concern." That's not an accurate statement. If it were just because of the ventilation, then we would have returned back to school in October or sorry, September of 2020, full-time without masks. So it was not just the ventilation that reduced the concern of transmission. And then whereas number six, the CDC states that cloth provides at least protection. So then says LA County, LA School District banned the use of cloth masks. They didn't do away with masks entirely. They recommended the K95 or N95 back in December or January. Whereas seven, same thing, do not provide wear protection. So that's why they upped their recommendations. So they never recommended at the time to not wear masks. It was always to wear something that had more protection. They make the statement that California is worse than other states. That's number nine. And that's not accurate, worse compared to other states that don't have mask mandates. That's not accurate. If you look up the actual statistics, California is not the best, but we are definitely not the worst. And there are states that don't have a mask mandate and low vaccination rates that have performed more poorly than California has. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have an additional speaker, Mr. Michaels?
Yes, we do. Next speaker is AK38. Please state your name and go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, and your name?
My name is Anna Kreider. I don't have much time. I'm at a meeting right now, so I just need to make this pretty quick and brief. But just wanted to voice my opinion on the possibility of future mask mandates. I'm all for choice. It needs to be a choice for these children to wear a mask if they want to or not. I don't agree with forcing children to wear masks at school, whether the government says so or not. Alls we have to do is look at the mental state our children are in. I know several children that have been affected by the mental effects of the masks. And it's something that's being ignored. We need to look at that. It is a huge, huge problem we're having. And I feel like it's being ignored by our school boards. So I mean, what's worse, you know, a virus that we're, you know, going to be living with for the rest of our lives? That's not going anywhere, that doesn't affect children, you know, or the mental health that is affecting children today. So I just encourage the board to really dive into this and dive into the mental health aspect of what these masks and mandates are doing to our kids. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Eileen Dover. Go ahead, please.
Yes, Eileen Dover. Thank you. I give you guys a little shout out for all the, what all the teachers have had to deal with on Zoom. A little shout out to Simpsons there. So thank you very much for following your own bylaws and actually agreeing to this special meeting and hearing our requests that I feel heard and listened to and seen, and that's great. A few things here. So I think I'm going to cut to the chase and say that you guys are not going to hamstring yourself and say that you're never going to instill another mask mandate because, yeah, rightfully so. But the fear is that any new variant that comes along, you're just going to bring them back. And I just like to say that unless people are dying in the street, we will not comply anymore. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Meredith Fitzgerald. Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you for having this meeting and having the community have an opportunity to speak. I have a daughter that has attended school in the Napa School District through this pandemic time period. And I can voice that there's, I've seen personally through my own children and other children, the very strong negative impact the masks have had on the mental health of children. You know, we read articles in the newspaper and we see articles on TV and it's common knowledge that there's a severe mental health crisis happening in America with children. And it seems very abstract because those are just numbers. But the parents that are calling in tonight are sharing with you that these are real children in our community that are drastically negatively impacted. And this does put the board in a strong, a problem potentially in the future. But I'm hoping that you can remember that these children, it's not just worrying about one aspect of the world, which would be a virus or a sickness. We are beings that have many aspects to our health and that we're considering that health from multiple standpoints, including the mental health of our most vulnerable children. Thank you again for having this meeting and allowing people to speak. And I hope in the future, if this is presented again, that the board thinks, continues having a dialogue with the community and we can continue to come up with a, or we can come up with solutions that need, needs more clearly across multiple areas of concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Lacey Olson. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Lacey Olson and I just wanted to thank all of you for your service. And thank you so much for allowing us to speak because this is really important to myself and my family and so many of my other friends that are here in our community. And I just want to say that I do support mask choice. It is up to us as the parents to decide what is best for our children. And I think many of us can probably agree, once these mask mandates were lifted, going into the store, seeing faces, like, I think we all needed that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Jeanette. Please state your full name and go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. And your name?
Jeanette Bailey. Thank you all for taking the time to hear us tonight. It means a lot to us. Recently, when masks came off, there were so many viral videos of children cheering with joy, finally taking their masks off. Their face that circulated the internet. There was so many of these videos in school rooms, just these kids ripping their masks off their face. It was simultaneously powerful and heartbreaking to see the joy on these kids' faces. They have been through so much, like the others have stated. I believe in mask choice. At this point, a mask mandate for children doesn't make sense. It was lifted long ago in many other states and counties. And as we all know, some countries never mask their children. I believe in everyone's choice to wear a mask, but we are asking that you do not mandate masks for our children again in the future. If you do decide to implement masks in the future, you need to be able to categorically defend your position and present the science. And currently, there's no leg to stand on or an argument to make for masking children. Our children have never been at risk and masks have caused more harm than good for our children. And sadly, the mental health effects are long-lasting. I'm asking you to please let the children keep smiling. It's been so amazing to see these children on the schoolyard, just smiling and in the grocery stores. So yeah, thank you so much for keeping our children's best interest in mind. That's all.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Gina Rendon. Go ahead, please.
Hi there, can you hear me? This is Gina Rendon.
We can.
Awesome. Thank you for having this opportunity to speak and talk about this issue that is very important to us and our families. I am a mother of young children who are currently learning to speak. And so when somebody is masked, the teachers are masked and other students are masked, it's really difficult. And I'm concerned about speech delays and many of my family members have had to seek speech therapy for their children because they are having a really hard time understanding people through masks. Even if you walk to a store, how many times have you looked at someone in their face and asked them to repeat themselves? Because you can't hear each other properly or understand each other properly through masks. And so us, who, we are adults and we know language very clearly. How much more than, is it more important for kids to be able to learn adequately through hearing better and also seeing people's facial expressions? Let's talk about emotional intelligence. You know, we show a lot of expression through our faces. How are kids to learn, you know, social cues that are done through making faces? You know, there's a lot to consider and I really don't think that masking children is better for them than not allowing them to. In addition to that, if they're not at risk for COVID, kids who have COVID typically get over it similar to a cold. If the adults and the teachers are really concerned about COVID for themselves, they can wear an N95. They can wear a shield. I come from a healthcare background and management. And so to me, working with a pulmonologist, that to me, he said, "The population is not equipped to understand how to put on a mask and take it off." And so if adults are not able to do that properly, how do you expect children to be able to put on a mask and take it off appropriately without spreading any more germs than they need to? They wouldn't otherwise touch their faces that way. So why mask them? That is all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Michaels, next comment, please.
Yes, next comment is Inveno Veritas. Please state your full name and go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
My name is Alexis Jessup. Thank you for taking the time to put on this meeting so that the public can comment. I think it's a bummer that it wasn't put on the agenda for the meeting that it was initially asked to be put on, but thank you for hearing us. It's pretty much impossible at this point to ignore the mental health crisis amongst our youth in California and pretty much across the whole world. And you guys, as the school board, really have an opportunity in the future because, you know, we know the mandates are going to come back. It's inevitable, but you guys really have an opportunity to do the right thing and do what you are supposed to do as our school board and protect our children and do what's in the best interest of our children. If you saw a video of a child who was told they wouldn't have to wear a mask to school the next day, if you saw one video, if you saw 20 videos, it's almost impossible not to get emotional seeing that. These kids have been told to wear a mask and my daughter is young. And these kids do not have a voice of their own at age five. When schoolteachers and school aides are making them put a mask on, they don't know any better. And it should be a choice. It should be a choice for the kids, which we know for the younger children, it's really up to their parents. But we are in charge of our children. We should get to choose whether or not there's a mask on their face. And I mean, not to state the other obvious situation that there's data everywhere showing that masks don't work. And I will say that I was getting multiple emails a week from my daughter's school about COVID exposures up until about two weeks after the mask mandate was lifted. And I have not gotten a single email about an exposure. So the masks really weren't protecting the children and we know that they were hurting them and harming them. And we need to think about the future of our children and putting masks over their faces for a sickness that the science shows does not affect children nearly as much as some people are trying to say it does. There have been no pediatric deaths in our county. There is a 0.002% death rate in the whole country, I believe, for children. And it's just backwards thinking to try and cover up their faces. And I just really hope you guys will look in your hearts and make the right choice the next time that a mandate comes through. One last thing I want to say is that there is evidence out there that has been shared with attorneys in the state of California that the mask mandate actually did not go through proper rulemaking protocol. So on a legal standpoint, it is in fact null and void. And I think that if mask mandates are brought back in this county, it's going to be brought up a lot that it is illegal to mandate masks on our children. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Al Grega. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Can.
Okay. Hi, my name is Lindsay Grega. Thanks so much for having this meeting. Like we've said before, it's a little untimely, but I think what we're asking for here is what's going to happen or what we want to know is what's going to happen in the future. That resolution I made. I'm a mom. I have five children. I'm always tired because I'm always doing all the things. I'm not an attorney. I'm not college educated, but I tried my best. I tried my the resources that I do have, the attorneys that I do know that are fighting this fight in California at a high level to create something that you guys could look at and see what you could agree with and what you don't agree with. So for me, I keep hearing you guys say that the intention of this meeting is to vote on resolving to pass or deny this specific resolution. And I want to just interject, I think this opened conversation. I think the resolution was, while it is supported by the community and all these people that are speaking, I think there's a lot of things that can be tweaked. So I'd like to open up that conversation instead of having it be a vote to pass or deny because of technicalities. I think that maybe if you find it in your hearts to hear the community that is speaking right now, that, you know, you can look at this resolution and say, well, this makes sense. This doesn't make sense. We can have another special meeting. We can talk more about it. You guys can vote on it in the future, whatever. I don't know exactly what happens next. But I just want to take that and make sure that you know that, you know, that was written with the intention of really just trying to get something moving forward. Now, we know that California and our governor really like to keep things in a state of emergency. And I really don't see a future where we're not going to be putting masks on our kids again when a new variant shows up. So what we want you to hear from our hearts is that we're not going to stand for it and that it doesn't exist. It's a recommendation. The mandate isn't law. These laws under emergencies are not laws. So you have a way out. You don't have to be bullied by your union. We can have a conversation to give the kids the opportunity for choice, the parents the opportunity for choice and also cover your butt. So let's work on that. So these children, including mine, who have exemptions and are harmed by masks, don't have to be masked again. Let's look for a way out of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker are the initials CC. Please state your full name and go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can. And your name, please?
Sierra Codren. So even though the mask mandate has ended, we do know that at any time it can be reinstated due to the fact the state of the emergency is still enforcing California. Therefore, I'd like to speak in terms of the law. Per 21.us code 369 BBB-3, Authorization for Medical Products, i.e. Masks, for Use in Emergencies states that appropriate conditions designed to ensure that individuals to whom the product is administered are informed of the option to accept or refuse administration of the product. Further, per California Civil Code, Article 5.2 Restraint and Seclusion 49005.8, State and Educational Provider shall not do any of the following: Use seclusion or behavioral restraint for the purposes of coercion, discipline, convenience, or retaliation. Use a behavioral restraint technique that restricts breathing, including but not limited to using a pillow, blanket, carpet, mat or any other item to cover a pupil's face. Given these laws, mask choice is the just course of action. You do not want a situation on your hands as what happened with Savannah Lay in Oregon, who passed out while wearing a mask and was found clinically dead. Fortunately for her, after seven, and the school, honestly, after seven minutes and a half of CPR, she was revived. Her doctors confirmed the cause was oxygen deprivation caused by the mask, which she was forced to wear. It is not uncommon to hear kids say they cannot breathe. It has been well documented that mask wearing does in fact infect breathing, which affects mood, behaviors and other areas of health. There has been a staggering increase in mental health in large part due to masks and the absurd and unscientific propaganda pushed behind them. Thus, the peer pressure and bullying as a result. And that right there is the actual real crisis. My soon-to-be five-year-old was speech delayed and although she has much improved, she still struggles with correct pronunciation. She, like so many other, needs to see how words are formed. She needs to clearly hear how words sound. She needs to see a full face for social cues and to fully grasp communication that is not 100% verbal. Enforcing masks is not setting our children up for success nor for self-confidence, emotional, mental or physical well-being. I urge you to stop hiding behind requirements, the suggested requirements as laws, because they are not. Stand for mask choice and honor and respect the community you serve to make the best medical decisions for themselves. Take a stand for parents and children's rights to
In three minutes, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Pam. Please state your full name and go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, this is Pam Demick and I'm calling because I am, I'm really encourage all of you to vote for mask choice, especially Alba and Rob and Robin. I'd like for you both to take a stand for choice, just like you guys chose to not wear a mask during the pandemic. You both were out in public. In fact, Alba was with a bunch of her political friends indoors in December of 2021 during the Omnicron surge. She and several of her friends, Joelle and Anne and Annie, who are all running for supervisor, which is hysterical, of Napa County. Two of them want Diane Dillon's spot and the other one wants Wagon Connect's spot. There, I have photographs of y'all, no masks, inside, shoulder to shoulder, taking selfies with Mike Thompson and his, and his group. So I would like you two to stand up. You know, Robin, I hear from a lot of my friends that you are, out of all the board members, the easiest to, for us to probably get along with. So I'm encouraging you to stand out, stand up on your own. See if you can do that. See if you can just vote against masks the next time they come around. Vote for mask choice. And if you can't, why don't you guys just put stickers on the kids that say COVID be gone? Because that is going to be just as effective and less obnoxious as the face masks. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Rochelle Duran, excuse me. Go ahead, please.
Yes, hi, my name's Rachel Duran. I'm a mom of three. I'm a firstborn and a role follower. I understand wanting to follow authority. I understand how it is easier to go with the majority and not want to stand out. It takes courage. I'm asking you all to be courageous because I actually believe I'm speaking for the majority. I fear most might not be speaking up for their children and fear of looking different and not being accepted by some. During these last two years, I have watched as my children suffered mentally. My son said the mask made him frustrated and angry daily. He felt distracted by something covering his face and he always felt like he couldn't breathe and I could not do anything about it. My daughter felt like she no longer wanted to smile. She didn't want to ask questions in class. She didn't want to volunteer to speak up. If she was asked to read out loud, she didn't want to read out loud with a mask on because people couldn't hear her. She felt like she was a muzzled dog and it made her sad. She lost her sparkle when at school and I believe many of their peers felt the same way. We have seen academic scoring drop significantly. When children express what's happening to them mentally, we have to stop and question authority. Who is the bad outweighing the good? Is there really any good masking a perfectly healthy child? My child will never go back to being masked. I speak for many when I say that they will not, they will be removed from NVUSD if it's ever enforced again. I'm asking you kindly to serve our children and not the state. What is truly in the best interest of our kids and how can they be the most successful should be your top priority? The choice of wearing a mask needs to be the end solution for our children's health. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is George Blair. Go ahead, please.
George Blair. Eight months ago, there was a Brown University study that showed that IQs of young people during the time of the masking has been drastically negatively affected. You'd think we'd pay attention to that Ivy League school and all. But if you do a search on the, for the fact checkers, the fact checker sites, they will see it'll, my gosh, they'll debunk it. Let me tell you about these fact checker sites. You want to know the purpose of fact checker sites? Read or reread the novel Animal Farm by George Orwell. Pay special attention to the character Squealer, the pig named Squealer. He's played, that's the role that the fact checkers play. They are lying propagandists for an oligarchy. You, and you scratch the surface of these fact checker sites and invariably you find Big Pharma money going to them. Can you say conflict of interest? So it turns out brains do need oxygen. We are a school district, right? You think IQs are important. Give our students their oxygen. If you look in the Library of Congress, they have pictures. Well, I've seen one. I know there's at least one, a picture of a slave with a mask on. That's what they used to do to disobedient slaves. I ask you, please do not put the slave muzzles back on our students. Done.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Kristy Wolf. Go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you. I'm Kristy Wolf and I'm a biology and environmental science teacher with Napa Valley Unified School District. I'm also a mother of three children, like many of you. I share my insight tonight with honesty and respect for our families. And I know we've all experienced a lot. I'm in the classroom. I serve students in many circumstances and I have continued to serve them in many circumstances over the past two years. I've listened to them firsthand at school, even the quiet ones. I know about the last two years too. Even the students living with their grandparents, even the quiet students with higher risk health conditions or who parents have higher risk health conditions. I've seen what it looks like when a teacher is out for one or more days. I know what it looks like for kids to scramble to find an adult to be in the room with teachers out due to illness or an ill family member. I'm so thankful that our community is well aware of the health, mental, mental health crisis affecting children today and that you will work with schools to support the resources that help students recover and thrive. What if the attorneys that you mentioned were working with, that you mentioned that you're working with, were fighting a fight to provide mental health resources to our students? We know that being at school helps many, helps in many ways and that masks enabled more people to remain in school. Maternal stress was shown to greatly affect children in this referenced Brown study by George Blair. This is the same and only study that was cited in the See Me Smile resolution. I quote, "Cognitive assessments were collected from full-term children between three months to three years of age." The only study that you've cited tonight is on infants and three-year-olds before and after the pandemic. From that same Brown study in the See My Smile evidence, page 20, we also note higher maternal education appears protective against effects of the pandemic. Another quote, page two of the report states, "For pregnant individuals, fear of attending prenatal visits increased maternal stress, anxiety, and depression." Is it possible, I ask you, that the maternal stress around the pandemic and perhaps the stress created in response to wearing a mask in this pandemic impacted those children and not the masks themselves? Page four of the report you brought states, "Maternal stress, anxiety, and depression in pregnancy can impact the developing fetal and infant brain structure and connectivity, leading to potential delays in motor cognitive and behavioral development." Past analysis has revealed strong associations between maternal stress and anxiety. Schools with mandatory masking during the Delta surge had approximately 72% fewer cases of in-school transmission. This last quote is from the National Institute of Health. I urge NVUSD to follow public health orders.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Jacqueline. Please state your full name and go ahead.
Hi, this is Jacqueline Roors. I'm, I just want to say that I am for mask choice, like so many of the other parents that have called in and to the previous educator that just called in. If a mask works, nobody's saying you can't wear it. But we want to have the choice to protect our kids in the way that we feel is best. Um, you know, we don't want to put medical devices on our kids that the boxes state don't work anyway. You know, that should be our decision as parents. I'm concerned, I mean, I just, you know, and I wish we could go back and forth and talk about this because like I want to know your opinion on our 12-year-old that's playing a woodwind instrument with a mask that has a hole in it. Well, he's blowing air through an instrument. This doesn't make sense. And if that makes sense to you, please, like, I wish we could have a dialogue around it because it's just, that doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense to them. And they come to us. I can't justify that. I can't. I played the same instrument he plays. I breathed in through my mouth to blow out through the instrument where there is a hole in the mask. None of this makes sense. You guys have heard me call in before. You've heard me stress how concerned I am about our kids' mental health, how we're seeing kids in Napa Valley Unified School District as young as eight years old attempting to commit suicide. Not one, not two, multiple. And as I've stated before, those students have never had, never had a normal school year. I don't think that has anything to do with maternal health. Has to do with the fact that they've never had a normal school year. They've been masked. I'm also super concerned about our special needs kids, our kids with sensory issues, our kids who Napa Valley Unified School District has denied their mask exemptions, repeatedly asking the doctors to rewrite them. That is unacceptable. You are not in the medical field. This is not, this is, this is not, this is just ridiculous. If a doctor says a kid shouldn't wear a mask, they shouldn't. Anyway. It's just, we're done. Our children's mental health is more important to us. And, you know, I mean, the, the reality of it is, is most of our kids have had COVID. And if we were to put a mask back on them, how, how does that make sense? How do we justify that to them? Because they're smart enough to say, wait, I already had this. Why do I need to put this back on? It's ridiculous. We obviously, as parents, have dropped the ball by allowing nobody that represents us on this board. But we're waking up. So, you know, we need some representation because the majority of us are on this side.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Sylvia Regalado Zachlaud. Go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Sylvia Regalado Zachlaud. I'm a parent of three students within NVUSD. And I too believe in choice for masking. I also believe in the flexibility that has afforded us to all be back in school with our children, that the district has diligently and sometimes even against their gut has, you know, really pushed forward to get us to where we are right now with our kids approaching milestones such as promotions and graduations in person. And I applaud the district for that. I think that I also applaud the fact that you're holding a meeting that really speaks to the parent advocacy that has been grown over the past couple of years in parents realizing that we do need to be more engaged and involved in our children's education. We have all gone through so much. We all sit on different sides of perspectives. And I think allowing us to voice concerns and giving us the choices is always right. I think also giving the district the flexibility and maintaining that flexibility that they're going to need to approach situations that we've never encountered before, including if it's so deemed in the future that a mask is, needs to be used again because we're going through something, that that's the flexibility that we continue to have. And I really liked what Lindsay, one of the callers earlier, said in terms of opening the dialogue. We all know that mental health issues have come to the surface. And so let's have a dialogue as a community about how we support the district in furthering the services and the resources that are already lacking because there's already a great need. How do we make that abundant so that when our kids can fully continue to be in classes, they're supported in a way that they can become resilient individuals and grow from this experience? And let's not focus on what we all wish and where we all believe it should be. The negativity we can leave behind. We really need to take our energy and focus it forward for our kids. If we all really do care about the kids that are in this district, we need to take solutions and present them and be part of that solution making. So thank you very much for your time this evening. And again, I hope that you hold on to the flexibility of making the choices that are going to be necessary, as difficult as they may be.
Thank you very much. Mr. Michaels, next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Amy. Please state your full name. Go ahead.
Hi, Amy Martenson. Yeah, just a few points. Currently, I am an employee for the school district, but at one time I was a student within the Napa Valley Unified School District. I went to Vinnich High School. And one of my favorite classes, actually two of my favorite classes, one was a political literature class where we read 1984 and Animal Farm and all of those good books. And then the other was taught by Mr. Mikowski was my government class. And during that class, he had us rewrite the Bill of Rights. And I remember how alarmed he was because students were so quick to want to throw out rights. And for what? Safety. There's a quote by George, sorry, Thomas Jefferson. "There is no justification for taking away individuals' freedom in the guise of public safety." But that's exactly what we've done over the last two years. We definitely flunked civics lesson. And I don't hear leaders really reflecting on that and asking, you know, was it worth it? Half of Americans now have had COVID. Clearly, what we have done hasn't worked over the last two years. The United States, the, one of the wealthiest countries in the world, has the highest COVID death rate in the world. And Europe is right there behind the United States of America. So clearly what we've been doing hasn't been working. And we're at where we should have been all along, which we're at a place where we are allowing people to make their own healthcare decisions, right? Because we're all different. Some people are afraid of COVID, other people are not. Some people have already had COVID. Some people aren't in a high-risk group. Some people have researched prevention and early treatments and feel like they're equipped with the tools that they need to deal with COVID if they get it. So we need to, we've done this for two years. I think people are done and are in a good place right now where they feel like they get to make choices for themselves. And I think that's where we need to stay. You know, our, our office is a good microcosm. Every, I think, if not everyone, a majority of people in our front office got COVID. And that's the vax, the unvax, the vaxxed and boosted, the people that hate wearing masks and wear them as little as possible and, and this thinly, you know, thin of mask as possible. And the double maskers who were sitting in their office wearing masks on Zoom. Everyone got COVID. So clearly that doesn't work. We need to restore choice and to both adults and children. And then lastly, body autonomy. We teach our children that they are in charge of their bodies, right? That they have body autonomy. And that's all went out the window, right? Which is really sad. And then lastly, all of the adults, no, I'll say most of the adults are not wearing masks at school anymore. They've taken down the partitions and everybody is very happy. And the kids are beginning to do the same. And that's a good thing. We need to keep that.
Thank you very Next speaker, please.
We have no more, we have no further public comment.
Thank you very much. We do have some additional public comment here in the room. Mr. Carmody, will you please come to the podium?
Thank you for hearing me. I know we're here to talk about the future of mask mandates, but I want to start with a parable to illustrate my point. We have a law in this county regarding personal fireworks. If you're unfamiliar with the law, we don't allow If you're unfamiliar with the law, we don't allow them, full stop. It's ridged by the fact that we currently have a very dry climate with lots of dry vegetation and that any one of us using fireworks poses a risk of setting a fire. I believe it's safe to say that most of our community agrees with this law and follows the instructions because if you lived here even recently, you've seen what a fire can do. You know that a spark can change thousands of peoples of lives. And the the fact that the law isn't going to stop all fires. It's a tool used for prevention. So we, as a community, can minimize the risk. Now, I will say, when I first started researching this, I didn't find statistical evidence on Cal Fire's website to support the claim that the law indeed works. But I did find a half a million results about stories about fireworks that did set fires. So I'm going to side on Cal Fire on this one. Now, if my neighbor down the street started setting off fireworks, I think I would probably talk to him about it quickly. And perhaps there would be some argument and the neighbor would use words like personal choice, liberty or freedom. And who knows, maybe his or her argument might be a good one. But the undisputed fact that will remain is that this person's personal choice has gone against what the experts had said can prevent additional harm to the community. And that I would find hard to accept. This past year, I believe you can find similar comparisons to COVID-19. It was like a fire sparked by millions. It's gone through our community. Changed thousands of peoples of lives forever. And like my parable, mask mandates aren't going to stop all cases of the disease spreading. It's a tool to use pre-prevention so we, as a community, can minimize the risk. Now, I can agree with the person who wrote, uh, the mandate, who said that, uh, it was difficult for them to find evidence regarding, uh, evidence, more of facts. I even called up the, the California Health Department website and asked an operator to help me find some sort of, um, information, but it was difficult. But that doesn't mean that the experts are not there and that it's not available. I please ask all of you, do not listen to your hearts, listen to your minds. I know we're all going to probably need to drink a very tall glass of wine after this. But listen to the experts and minimize the risk to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I welcome Mr. Foreman to the podium. Yes, sir.
I'll take my mask off to speak. Thank you. I think I've just listened to a lot of white privilege today. Coming in, they couldn't even show up in person to say what they had to say. Uh, when I was nineteen, eighteen, three months after my 18th birthday, I joined the military during the Vietnam War as my duty to serve my country. It wasn't a privilege to serve. It wasn't a right to serve. It was my duty. There's been a foreman in every war since before the revolution, except World War One. My oldest went to, uh, well, I guess we missed Desert Storm too. He went in just after Desert Storm. He was in Afghanistan and in Iraq. I wanted to go with the Marines to Vietnam. I became a corpsman. One third of corpsmen went to Vietnam. I didn't get to go. Instead, they sent me to San Diego to be in a research unit treating and studying spinal meningitis. It's a bacterial infection. About half the people came in, in various stages of coma, and half the people came in various stages of sepsis. It's passed very much the same way this virus has passed. We told the Navy boot camp, they need to separate the bunks to provide more space between bunks. They said they wouldn't do it. They couldn't do it. We went to the Marines. Marines are great. You give them an order, they follow it. They made more room. Up to that point, they had the same incidence of spinal meningitis. After that, the Navy had twice as many as the Marines. Very simple, traditional procedures to stop the spread of disease are absolutely called for. Wearing a mask, getting vaccinated. These are things we've been doing since Lisa, you know, for heck of a long time. Smallpox was being used as a vaccine during the Revolutionary War. Wearing a mask is a duty. It's a duty to protect your fellow citizens. It's not to protect yourself. It really isn't. Although a hole in the mask, like the one lady mentioned, is certainly a mistake. We want to slow down the spread of disease so we don't plug up our hospitals and can't treat the people coming in sick and have 600,000, 800,000 Americans die. That's why we wear masks, to slow down this disease. So we have enough hospital and medical equipment to, you know, to try to save people to come in sick. It's real simple math. Fox News isn't going to tell you that because they're making a lot of money by saying the opposite, even though they all wear masks behind the camera. They're hypocrites. And we got evidently a lot of yahoos here that listen to those sources and believe that their privilege is more important than their duty to this country and to their fellow citizens. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and thank you for your service. I believe that is it on public comment. I will now welcome Laura Burzens, who will provide us with an informational presentation. Ms. Burzens, are you available?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you. We can. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Is it possible to get the PowerPoint up that was sent or? If, if not, maybe I can, okay, perfect. Thank you. Yes. Uh, great. So my name is Laura Burzens and I'm an attorney at the law firm Garcia Hernandez Swanee. The district asks that I present on the legal aspects of the request that the See My Smile campaign sent the district. Next slide. Before we get into the resolution, I wanted to give a quick update on masking in general, though I am sure that most of you are, are well aware of the recent updates. Recently, Governor Newsom announced that masks are no longer required inside schools and childcare facilities in California. And as of March 14th, the district adopted a new indoor, new indoor mask policies that removed the requirement to mask indoors in schools across the district. Yet masks are still strongly recommended. Um, and this is in a line, this is in alliance with the state mandate. Next slide. Prior to the mask mandate being lifted, as you know, the Show My Smile campaign sent a request that the board adopt a resolution stating that regardless of health orders, parents have the right to choose whether or not their children wear masks. Uh, next slide. In the next two slides, you'll see the specific arguments that the group has made with the primary argument being that the California Department of Public Health Guidance is not mandatory. And another argument that, that, that folks have made is that the California Department of Public Health has authority to take measures to prevent the spread of disease only if there's a necessity and if the measures actually work. Another argument that was made is that there's no heightened duty of care for educators. Uh, the fourth argument they make is that the California Department of Public Health's assertion that substantial liability would be incurred if a staff member contracts COVID when a child is not wearing a mask is ill-founded. Next slide. Another argument that the group makes is that the Department of Public Health's threat that cert- certified individuals would lose their license is a baseless threat. The group also argues that neither health nor sa- that neither the health nor and safety code nor the education code authorize fines for school officials who refuse to adhere to the masking, to the mandatory masking directive. And finally, the group argues that the California Department of Public Health's argument that mandatory masking does not violate parental and personal choices unfounded. Next slide. From a legal perspective, the proposed resolution is, is really moot at this point. The California Department of Public Health has lifted the mask mandate and in response, the district no longer requires masks indoors. To the extent that the campaign is asking the district to commit to a specific approach now to some potential future mask mandate, the board acting now would not be prudent. We have no information about the specific facts and legal issues about any potential public health order at this time. Next slide. And so given that the proposed resolution is moot, I didn't think it was productive to get into all the specific arguments that the campaign addresses. But I did want to mention kind of the, the most major and, and argument that comes up the most, which is that the, the district really does have an obligation to comply with state orders. Health and Safety Code, Section 120140 specifically authorizes the California Department of Public Health to take measures as are necessary to prevent the spread of diseases such as COVID-19. There was a state order, I'm sure many of you are familiar with it, of June 11th, 2021, that was expressly based on this section and states that individuals must follow the face covering guidance. From there, the California Department of Public Health Guidance for K-12 schools was issued pursuant to that order and required mandatory universal masking indoors in K through 12 settings. Of course, all of this is in the past and since, um, since the, um, request was initially filed with the district, things have obviously changed. Next slide. So to reiterate, the board really does not have the authority to override a county health officer, the governor, and decisions that are made at the state and county level where mandates and orders are approved. And the California Department of Public Health, with respect to the masking, specifically provides that while the district can tailor the protocols for enforcing the mask mandate, they didn't have the discretion or authority to opt out from enforcing that mask mandate. Next slide. And on a final note, I did want to, uh, make a quick note about, um, financial responsibility in all of this. Because the district can absolutely be held financially law, financially responsibility for any loss, claim or litigation based upon the district's failure to follow state law, public health orders, or other mandates regarding public schools, COVID-19 face masks, vaccination and testing and other mandates and orders. So that is it for me. But, uh, in conclusion, uh, from a legal perspective, the proposed resolution is more, is moot. And, um, if the board did go ahead and sign it, they could be in violation of future health directives.
Thank you very much. Trustees, um, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Sure. Um, I mean, I think that presentation was pretty obvious when it comes to the law. There's there's not much to add to that. I do want to say from a public health perspective, you know, we want to do what's anything in our ability to keep our kids in school for the sake of education. And if, and, and the, the the going, you know, method is to do what's called this, a, um, Swiss cheese method where you layer on protections. Not one protection is going to be a hundred percent. The idea is that if you have multiple layers, even if some of them have holes, you will start to get better protection. And that's what we're going for. We cannot prevent this disease a hundred percent. Actually, that is not the way public health works. The public health is to minimize the impact of disease, especially on our healthcare system so that we can serve the entire population as best as we can. And if we take our ability to have any one of those layers, it, I, I, I can't speak to what could happen. I mean, this particular virus is mutating faster than I think most scientists anticipate. And it's really only a matter of time that it may get to our children. And I don't want to have no ability to protect our children and keep them in school. And I want to make sure that our staff is also protected. This is not about a union. It is not about, you know, anything other extraneous thing, except we want to keep our kids in school and be able to educate them as best as we can. And we know that's in the classroom. It is not online. This has to be an option for us and to keep that available to us is what I'm, I'm hoping, um, that we will decide on. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Chu. Trustee Water.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, President Jankowicz. And I'd like to thank everyone who spoke tonight. I was sitting, uh, thinking about the last two years. Sylvia Regalado, you, I didn't get your last name, but I remember what you said. You said, "We have all been through so much in the last two years." I've kind of, uh, kept a news clipping file of, um, articles ever since this started. And, um, I think I'm going to put them in a folder called "Lest We Forget." And I would really like to thank Mr. Foreman for coming up. And Mr. Foreman, you and I are about the same age, I believe. And I do remember. I don't think so. I'm a Vietnam era person, kiddo, even though I didn't serve. But he talked about the, um, the spinal meningitis fear. I, I do remember that. I also remember, um, uh, I also remember, you know, parents weeping with joy when the, uh, when the polio vaccine came out. But as Sylvia said, we have all been through so much. In fact, we've been through so much that we I think maybe forget that, you know, other people have been through a lot. I just learned that, well, a, a month ago, I read an article, um, almost exactly a month ago, it was March 7th. Do you know that more than 200,000 children have lost a primary caregiver? Almost 200,000 children in this country have lost a primary caregiver. And one thing we have learned through this pandemic is that, you know, our culture doesn't value children. It doesn't really. You know, we value them as consumers and as cute little things and, you know, that sort of thing. But, you know, real help. We saw everything fall apart. And, um, 200,000 children have lost a primary caregiver because of COVID. They're orphans. They're orphans. And, um, to me, that's, that's just appalling. And, uh, I really want to thank, um, also Mr. Carmody for talking about, you know, layers of protection. I appreciate that. We don't want to go back to, um, the fear of, of two years ago. And while, um, I'm really happy that I've had, had a million vaccinations and I'm, you know, pretty sure that I had COVID back in February of 2020, uh, thanks to a house guest from Hong Kong. I, I don't want us to go back. And I also don't want us to put ourselves in an arbitrary straitjacket where we don't have, as Sylvia said, the flexibility. We're going, we, we will need to negotiate. A mutation, should it, should it come. And, uh, I think that we, I think that we, uh, I, I can't support, I can't support the resolution. I believe that we have some very well-meaning people who are concerned about our children. And I think that's absolutely laudable and the way things should be, but I can't support this resolution.
Thank you, Trustee Water. Trustee Julie.
Thank you, President. Um, I, as a, as a parent and as a, a, someone who, who cares about the students in this, uh, district, I am very glad that we are in a position as a society right now to not require masks. I'm hopeful that we can keep this, this, uh, keep the community transmission low enough, the, uh, hospital, hospitalization rate low enough that we can maintain this. Um, I'm under no illusion that that is guaranteed. Uh, and as many have mentioned tonight, there is a good chance that, uh, based on the way this pandemic has, has, uh, gone thus far, that we will see a need for additional, uh, protections against community transmission. Um, I want to focus a little on community transmission. I want to focus a little on community transmission because one of the, the reason for it is kind of primarily to protect the individuals that are in a community environment. But it's also to protect the people they come in contact with. So while the, while COVID has not impacted children under 15 or 16 as severely as it has other age groups, those students go home to parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, to their, to their people. And those people they return home to might be in a vulnerable population, one that has been hit really hard by the pandemic. It's the number one cause of death over the last two and a half years among several age groups. It's in the top 10 cause of death among children, which is not nothing. But it's that community transmission aspect that is the issue. Masks have been shown to reduce the community transmission among students, kids at school by up to 80%. That's, that's 80% fewer cases, not of cases of students arriving at school with COVID, but cases of people contracting COVID at school and then bringing those cases out back into the community. It's, it is a layer of mitigation that we need to have, we, as a, as a tool to address future, future expansion or future growth of the virus. As for the, the legal aspects, I, you know, in my day job, part of my, my role is to, to assist in addressing the effectiveness and legal import of the governor's orders over the past few years. The governor's orders were issued under the Emergency Services Act, which authorizes the governor to make orders that are, in order to address a declared emergency, conditions of a declared emergency. And the California law explicitly states that those orders will have the force and effect of law. Among those orders is the requirement that the California public follow the public health guidance from CDPH. As we saw from the presentation from council, there's independent authority for the CDPH to issue these orders. It's, it's undeniable that we are bound by law to apply these, these, the guidance, the guidelines and orders of the Department of Public Health. So in passing this, we would, as council pointed out, we would be committing ourselves to violate a potential future public health order, to violate the law in the future. What, what struck me from some of the public comment, especially those who were stating that they would not follow the law, the, the public health orders in the future, that they were done and that they would, they wouldn't put masks back on, is that regardless of what we do, there will be people who do not follow the rules, who do not follow the law, do not follow our requirements. And what, what we're being asked to do is to remove the consequences of that act. We're being asked to remove the consequences of the violation of law and take that on the system, our system, the district, where the consequences would be felt by the entire district rather than a, a select few who choose not to follow the rules. I'm not willing to absolve someone from violating a future law at the expense of the rest of this district. So I will not be supporting.
Thank you, Trustee Dooley. Trustee, I'm Riser, would you?
Yes, thank you. I don't have much to add. I did want to respond to the statement that children are not affected by COVID because that just is patently untrue. It hit my, close to my family last week. My three-year-old nephew, who lives on the other side of the country, was having a third birthday party and one of the guests had been traveling and gave everybody at that party COVID, including my unvaccinated three-year-old nephew, who ran a temperature of over 104, close to 105, and had to be rushed to the emergency room. Luckily, he is over it and fine. But the data does show that children who have suffered from COVID are at an increased risk. And we don't know that we're out of the woods about the multiple system inflammatory syndrome or whatever that is that's called. I don't know whether my nephew will suffer from that or other delays because he was unvaccinated and suffered from a serious case. And then the other thing I wanted to just address was, I think it's a lot to put on the masks to say that the mask wearing alone is what has caused this mental health crisis that we, that we all acknowledge. And I believe our district is being very proactive and very responsive to that known fact. You know, it's not the mask wearing, it's the whole shebang of the last two years and the way our lives have been disrupted and our comforts have been taken away. And, you know, the, I don't remember where in the conversation it came up of the, you know, the stress on parents, the financial stress and the fear of the health risks. And all of that is a very complex and layered scenario. So I don't think that it is only wearing masks that is causing people to feel like this is a difficult time. And I want to, I know that all of the parents and community members that have, have called in and expressed their distress and concern about this mental health crisis. I know and believe that you are speaking from, you know, true concern for your children and the children of our community. And I just want to encourage you, if your children or other children that you, you know, your friend, your kids' friends or other children that you're aware of are really struggling, we have resources in our schools. Please reach out to your children's teacher, to the site principal, to the, you know, the district level. We have Mr. Mansway from Students Support Services here. Our district is, is taking our one-time COVID money in addition to our general fund dollars that we would normally use to support mental health services and really doing everything that is within our power and within our resources to support students and staff and adults who are struggling. So please, if your child or other children that you know are really struggling with anxiety or depression, reach out because we have resources in our district to help support you. This has been a crazy two years. And I, I just ask the community to believe that when we, as a governance team, take on a decision like this, that we are doing it from the place of staying in accordance with our state and local guidelines and making the decisions that we believe are in the best interest of our students and our staff. So that is the place from which I say that I cannot support a resolution that would, someone used the word hamstring, that would hamstring us in, in a future scenario that we cannot predict what the conditions are going to be. And I echo Trustee Dooley's optimism. I'm grateful that we are at a point where we don't have to mandate masks in schools. And I hope that we stay here, but we may not. And if that time should come and the conditions change and the transmission rates go up and the hospitalization rates go up and we're back to looking at how many ICU beds are available in our county, then we need to be able to be responsive to those conditions. So for that reason, I will not be supporting the resolution.
Thank you, Trustee Riser and Trustee Gracia.
So our attorney tonight made very clear that we are obligated to follow the law of the state of California as laid down by the governor, the legislature, our local health department. And we don't have options around. If we don't follow those rules, then at the end of the day, we can be penalized and we are very much putting the financial health of this district at risk. We have fought very hard for the last four years to pull this district back from the brink of receivership. I am not ready to gamble the financial future of this district on the possibility that we may suffer severe financial repercussions because we chose to flaunt the law. We are required to follow the law. If you don't like the law, then you need to lobby the folks in Sacramento in order to get the laws changed. And then we will follow whatever that law is. But we are bound to follow the law. So I cannot support the passage of this resolution as it asks us to flaunt the law.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia. I do want to thank the community member, Ms. Grega, who brought forth the resolution for consideration. And I do want to thank everyone who engaged in public comment. I do respect your advocacy. The board received and reviewed the submitted resolution. The item was brought forth by a community member, so we will not request a recommendation from staff. We all love seeing the smiles on our children's faces. And as frustrating as it might be, it is our responsibility as a public agency to follow the law. Think of the well over 1,600 employees, many with children just like yourselves, whose livelihood could be impacted if this decision had financial consequences from the state. This impact reverberates far beyond just the mask decision. We do not have the ability to exercise subjectivity without consequences in face of the law. We will be taking action on the resolution, resolution submitted by the See My Smile campaign. The motion will be made on whether the board will approve the resolution as submitted. Ms. Grega, once it has been submitted as a resolution, we have to vote on it as such as that is now our responsibility. So may I please have a motion?
Oh, well, motion.
The motion.
On this resolution.
Going to vote on the resolution as submitted. So we will, the resolution, as it was submitted to us, we will now vote on it. So I just need a motion on the resolution, on whether or not we're going to pass it or not as it was submitted.
And just from a procedural standpoint, we can't take any action until there's a motion on the floor. So the motion has to be made before we can vote on it. So I will move that we approve the resolution as written.
We, you, to approve the resolution as written?
That's the motion on the floor.
First by?
By me.
Trustee Dooley, second by? Second by Trustee Riser. Vera, a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Trustee Jankowicz?
Hi.
Trustee Gracia?
No.
Trustee Water?
No.
Trustee Riser?
No.
Trustee Chu?
Hey.
Trustee Dooley?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. Now we move to our next item of business, which is our adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Trustee Dooley. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.